Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council for Monday, October 21st, 2024, and ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, please call the roll.
Alderman Park.
Here.
Alderman Nudera.
Here.
Alderman Bastido.
Here.
Alderman Nardini.
Here.
Alderman Brennan.
Here.
Alderman Erby.
Here.
Alderman Deuter.
Here.
Alderman Veremis.
Here.
Alderman Hill.
Here.
Alderman Shenko.
Here.
Alderman Jensen.
Here.
Alderman Bram.
Here.
Alderman Cahill, absent. Alderman Toledo.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Move on to item two, presentation of the Water Ambassador Award from the Illinois Section of the American Waterworks Association, and I'll ask Direct Public Works Director Bellicky to join me at the podium.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have the honor tonight of introducing Annie Story, who is the Executive Director of the Illinois Section of the American Waterworks Association, and Ralph Gross, who is the District Two C trustee of the same ISA WWA. They're here to present the city with the Water Ambassador Award for this year. And so as to not steal their thunder, I know they have a short presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Ralph, and he'll say a few words about kind of what this means in the presentation of the award for the city.
Thank you, Stan. Well, good evening, Mayor Levin, members of the City Council, and members of the audience who have been able to join us tonight. It's an honor for me to be here tonight because today is a special day in the history of the city of Elmhurst. I'm Ralph Gross, as Stan said, District Two trustee for the Illinois Section of the American Waterworks Association, and District Two covers essentially DuPage County. So who are we? We are the Illinois Section of the American Waterworks Association, which is an organization that provides resources, education, and training to our 2,400 member of water professionals across the state. The Illinois Section is one of the largest sections in the AWWA, which has over 50,000 members across and throughout the world. We are truly all part of a global water community. With the presentation of this prestigious gold level award, the City Council, your administration, operations, and maintenance staff, and the residents of Elmhurst have yet one more reason to be very proud of the city of Elmhurst and the fine work that you all perform for your residents. So what is the Water Ambassador Award? To give you a little bit of background, in 2021, the Illinois Section rolled out a new initiative called the Water Ambassador Program. The program's objective was to elevate public perception, promote conservation of water, and consumer education of the water industry to municipalities, government, and its citizens, the consumer. To accomplish these goals, a new communication platform of educational and promotional content was created to provide information in a manner that's relevant, engaging, and consistent for municipal water suppliers, their communities, and the public consumers that they serve. They set up a schedule of programs, accomplished these educational programs, initiatives, and objectives throughout the year. Elmhurst, when this program rolled out, Elmhurst did not hesitate to engage in this program. Your public works staff has done a remarkable work with the council, administration, and public works employees, and education, especially the public, in promoting the value of one of life's most precious and available resources, safe, clean, and abundant drinking water. As an aside, I'm very proud of the history that I've shared over the years with the city of Elmhurst, starting with great men that I started out with, Mayor Abner Gannett, Manager Bob Palmer, and Tom Borchardt, who was the director back in those days. They became mentors when they aren't intimidating the heck out of me. They were great guys. They saw something in me and gave our new company, ATS, a chance to perform leak detection surveys of the water system. That was the beginning of a successful business relationship that has continued for over 44 years. In those days, Lake Michigan water was still on the horizon, was certainly talked about and being planned for, but not everybody was taking the type of aggressive action that Elmhurst was. You guys were on the cutting edge in those days. We witnessed firsthand how dedicated the city is to provide great services to your citizens. During those, we have worked with many public works directors, utility superintendents, and countless public works employees in the office and in the field, and I can truly say that the city of Elmhurst Public Works Department and its Utilities Division are second to none. They know that they are protecting and conserving water as important as protecting the air is to the air we breathe. As we all know, there is no life without abundant, safe water. This award is a testament to Elmhurst's commitment to achieving those objectives. There is no higher quality water in the world than the water that Elmhurst supplies to its residents and its business community. Elmhurst strives to be the best in all areas of the committee. That's obvious when you just drive through town. This award is confirmation that the city's ongoing work to be the best in providing clean, safe drinking water is paying off. There are few water suppliers and municipalities in Illinois that have been as vigilant, as aggressive, and as proactive in water conservation and educating their community as the city of Elmhurst has been. In fact, this year, Elmhurst is one of only 21 communities, water suppliers in the state of Illinois, to have achieved the gold level award for the Water Ambassador. And to add just a little more to it, only one of eight communities that have won the award all three years that it's even existed. That's something really to be proud of. So on behalf of the Illinois Section of the AWWA, it is my honor to present the Water Ambassador Gold Award to the city of Elmhurst and all of its dedicated staff members of the Water Utility Division and the Elmhurst Public Works Department.
Congratulations.
Jonathan Toomey, who is our Utility Superintendent, is here this evening. Jonathan has been instrumental in the city's achievement of this award tonight and in continuing our program, as Ralph mentioned, the first three years that we've gone through this. The other person that really deserves special thanks is the city's Communication Manager, Cassandra Schreff, and her team in the Communications Group. They are a big part of everything that we do in getting our word, the word out to the community in terms of the value and the work that's done on the utility side of the public works operation. So certainly want to make sure that they are aware and mentioned in terms of their important role in us being able to achieve this tonight. So with that, I will again say thank you and appreciate the council's time tonight.
I want to introduce Jonathan Caesar.
Yes. Jonathan, I mentioned Jonathan Toomey. Jonathan's here this evening as part of our group, accepting the recognition this evening.
Thank you very much. Another fine honor, which we appreciate very much. We'll move on to item three on the agenda, receipt of written communications from the public, in addition to any that may have been posted. Is there any member of the public that has a written communication that they would like to present to the council? If so, please come forward and present them to Clerk Tamer. All right, we'll move on to item four, public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public forum this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have Jim Hodep.
Mr. Hodep, if you will approach and use the microphone behind the podium against the wall, state your name. Address is optional, and we allow for each person making public comment, three minutes. That's fine, Mr. Hodep, right there. Yeah, and pull the microphone down so you can speak directly into it. There you go.
My name is Jim Hodep, and I live at 739 Stewart Court in Elmhurst, Illinois. And I got a special request, which I normally turn down, but this request I could not.
A little closer to the microphone, Mr. Hodep.
That's a secret at the moment. Here I go. No questions, please. Wickety-whack. My name is Hodep. Happy birthday, happy birthday to ya. Happy birthday, Emily Bastido. You're the best of all the rest. You're the queen that passed the test, and yes, I must confess, your destiny has finally manifest. The alderman of the hip-hop nation, the weed of creation, the worth of the earth, the mystic girth of this mighty old oak is no joke. And just in case anyone in Elmhurst wants to know, I'm the goat. See you later, alligator, after-wild crocodile. I hope I made the beautiful queen Emily Bastido smile.
No more outbursts like that. All right. Well, Emily, happy birthday, Alderman Bastido. Did anyone else sign up for public forum? Any other rappers?
No rappers, I don't think. Tom Altergat.
Mr. Altergat?
It's a hard one to follow.
Please state your last name. Address is optional.
Tom Altergat, 144 South Rex, in a formerly known as College View neighborhood. I'm not sure how to follow that rap. It'd be amazing. But I attended the Development, Planning, and Zoning Committee meeting on Tuesday, October 15th. During this meeting, the topic of window wells and a side yard setback was addressed by both public comments and by city official presentations. During a public comment made by a builder, he mentioned the need for a window well for escaping a house fire from within a basement, as well as allowing emergency workers basement access. No one, especially I, would deny this need. My point all along is that it should not be within a side yard setback when our zoning ordinance clearly does not permit it. When City Council looks under the existing zoning ordinance, it finds the terms yard and setback defined in Article 13 Rules and Definitions, Chapter 22, Section 292. Setback means the required minimum horizontal distance between a property line and a building measured to the exterior face of the building. Yard means an open space on the same zoning lot with a building or structure unoccupied and unobstructed from its lowest level to the sky, except as otherwise permitted in subsection 2246(c), which, subsection 2246(c) then lists the permitted obstructions and required yards, and window wells are conspicuously absent among the permitted obstructions. Turning to the Red Line Draft Version 2.0 of the ordinance rewrite, I found the proposed definition for yard and setback in Chapter A2 Definitions and Measurements, Section N, Yards and Setbacks. It does not contain any language requiring the yard and setback to be clear from its lowest level to the sky. Also, there is a new table of permitted encroachments, which allows window wells in all required yard setbacks. As of yet, the table merely states that window wells are allowed without any restrictions on size, height, encroachment length, or distance from neighbors' property. Remember that today, our zoning ordinance does not allow window wells in a side yard setback at all. Despite that, we have seen that the city has decided not to enforce it, resulting in numerous incidents of property damage caused by excavations for these very same unpermitted window wells. Now, city officials want to allow unrestricted window wells in the setbacks? How many damaged properties are too many before public safety and protection of property return to the top of priorities for our city management? I implore the council to think hard about these proposed window well allowances before voting for their approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altergat.
Kristi Ainge.
Ainge. State your name, address, optional.
Hi, my name is Kristi Ainge. This past summer, Elmhurst reached a milestone addressing citywide flooding. I'm sure it was not an easy effort, and I applaud the city for the work that has been done. There are, however, some facts that may have been forgotten or are unknown. The city's flood plan recommended 17 acre feet of stormwater storage for Pine Avon and four acre feet of storage for Geneva. Four homes were purchased and demolished to provide the four acre feet of storage at Geneva, and the Golden Meadows Improvement Project was able to provide 12.2 acre feet of storage, working with the Park District. There is a glaring discrepancy in the storage value for Pine Avon. The remaining 4.8 acre feet of floodwater was left as overland flooding of the streets and yards. This leaves the homes at risk of flooding. What further exacerbates the flood risk is the rainfall itself. Bulletin 70 was used to define the 100-year storm event of 7.58 inches of rainfall. Today, Bulletin 75 defines the same storm event as 8.57 inches. That is a staggering increase of one inch, or 13% increase of rainfall, for this storm event, meaning designs based on Bulletin 70 may no longer be adequate for the current standards set by Bulletin 75. Furthermore, new development across Elmhurst follows a stormwater zero offset policy that will be costly to a developer. This zero offset policy is a good start for helping control stormwater, but the reality is, it is a one-time implementation, and the rainfall is not stagnant. If we develop any of the green space, there is going to be additional runoff that will eventually reach Geneva and Pine Avon. For the green space neighborhood, there is already a shortage of stormwater storage. Taking away the green space and therefore taking away a significant amount of stormwater storage jeopardizes the neighborhood. My fear is that the city will sell the green space for today's land value and put the homes and the residents of the neighborhood in harm's way, then only to realize the detrimental impact and realize the need to reconstruct open space for stormwater management. If that happens, in addition to the cost of constructing stormwater improvement, will the city buy back the same land for the future cost of land plus improvements, recalling the city memo, valued each new buildable site at $1.5 million to $2 million? Or will the city aim to buy the more affordable housing in this neighborhood and demolish it? To me, both of these options would be a huge loss to the city, either by loss monetarily or by loss of affordable housing. Please reconsider the sale of the green space between Third and Schiller. The green space, as is, provides so much benefit to the city by means of stormwater management, recreation and safe passage, and sustainability. Thank you, and happy birthday.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer?
That's it, Mayor.
All right, that's the end of the list of those who signed up to make, signed in to make public comment. Is there any member of the audience that would like to make public comment but did not have the opportunity to sign in? If so, raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on, close public forum, and move on to, excuse me, to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Nardini? Oh, I'm sorry, it's Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I am happy to announce the new Lake York Business Association, founded by Abby Cannon, Ober of Aunt Tina's Kitchen, and representing the northern half of Elmhurst. It is my hope that this organization will help promote the uniqueness that is Elmhurst. If business owners are interested in more information about this group, please feel free to contact your second and third ward aldermen, city staff, or Ms. Cannon at Aunt Tina's Kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other announcements? City clerk.
Early voting at City Hall began today and will continue until Monday, November 4th. The hours are weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and weekends, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and early voting is in conference rooms two and three this year. That's it.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Any other announcements? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, please read the consent agenda.
6.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on October 7th, 2024. 6.2 accounts payable, October 21st, 2024. $4,837, $37, I don't even say, wait, I'm sorry. 6.3 referral, council member compensation. 6.4 appointment of Linda Mar to the Senior Citizen Commission. 6.5 report consultant services renewals. 6.6 report, fifth extended memorandum of understanding with FOP Lodge 81. 6.7 report, 2024 Dan Gibbons Turkey Trot. 6.8 report, 2025 GIS Consortium Service Provider Contract. 6.9 report, Amendment Two to Phase Two Contract for the Metro Train Station Project. 6.10 report, Crestview, Indiana and Van Aken Phase One Engineering Service Contract. 6.11 report, professional engineering agreement for general engineering services. 6.12 report, public works garage security camera project. 6.13 report, Route 83, Kingery Highway Pedestrian Bridge Joint Funding Agreement. 6.14 report, St. Charles and Cottage Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon Improvements Balancing Change Order. 6.15, an ordinance amending ordinance number ZO12 2023 to authorize the extension of time for the final planned unit development permit for the construction of a medical office building on the property commonly known as 1100 South York Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. 6.16, an ordinance granting conditional use permits and associated variations for the development of the property commonly known as 217 East Butterfield Road, Elmhurst, Illinois. 6.17, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance and execution of a temporary construction access agreement and restrictions by and between Thornton's LLC and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. 6.18, 2024 Estimated Property Tax Resolution. 6.19, a resolution to approve and authorize the City of Elmhurst Support and the DuPage Senior Citizens Council. 6.20, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the professional services agreement between the City of Elmhurst and Kinnick, Lindgren, O'Hara, and Abuna, Inc. for the Neighborhood Traffic Study, Area Number Six. 6.21, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement and general release by and between, redacted, the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, Superior Air Ground Ambulance Service, Inc., and Metro Paramedic Services, Inc., for the resolution of the discrimination claim.
All right. Before we go on, City Attorney, do you have something you wanted to add for 621?
Yes. There is a settlement agreement on the agenda this evening between the parties just mentioned by the clerk. The amount is in the amount of $48,000, and as I said, it was between the City of Elmhurst and third-party contract.
All right. All right, is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either to vote against or for further discussion? Alderman Bram.
6.5.
6.5. All right, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 6.5. Alderman Jensen with a motion, Alderman Nudera with a second. Clerk Tamer?
Park. Aye. Nudera.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill, absent.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda minus item 6.5 is approved. Clerk Tamer, would you read the report for 6.5?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Department Planning and Zoning Committee, excuse me, Development Planning and Zoning Committee, that the City Council direct the City Attorney to prepare individual consultant agreements with Van Slyke Enterprises, Inc. and Ken Bartels Consulting for consulting services, as described by signed Alderman Marty Deuter, Chair, and Alderman Jennifer Veremis, Vice Chair, and Alderman Tina Park.
Thank you. Alderman Deuter?
Motion.
Oh, for the motion, yeah. Second, Alderman Veremis, all right, and Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. The report before us tonight is a recommendation from the Development Planning and Zoning Committee to approve agreements with two consultants who have been providing services to the city for years. In the case of Mr. Charlie Van Slyke, he has been working with the city since 1988. He provides real estate consultant services. Some specific examples of recent work include representing the city in real estate transactions, specifically the sale of city-owned property to Salt Creek School District, and the purchase of two properties on Angleton for stormwater purposes. Those transactions, with those transactions, he was compensated through the contract at an hourly rate rather than by commission. Mr. Van Slyke also supports the city with easement procurement, specifically in recent time, related to Pick Park and the Dog Park that is currently under construction, and he also reviews tenant leases in city-owned properties. In the case of Mr. Ken Bartels, he's been working with the city since 2009. He provides economic development and fundraising services. Specific examples of his work, recent work, include organizing and tracking Economic Development Commission member business visits. He assists in the planning and day of coordination of all the city economic development events. There were six of those last year. There are five of them this year, including Women in Leadership and Real Estate Professionals Forum. And for the History Museum, Mr. Bartels supports fundraising and sponsorship requests, and a portion of that work is funded by the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. The work that these consultants do is completed at staff's direction. The work is billed by the number of hours worked. The contract for these consultants specifies a maximum number of hours that can be worked annually, and for both consultants, the number of hours worked consistently falls below that maximum. Over the past three years, the number of hours worked is typically between 60 and 70, I'm sorry, 70 and 80% of the total number of hours allowed. The terms of the proposed contracts are similar to the most recent contracts. The term would be three years, and either party has the ability to cancel the contract with 90 days of notice. The report specifies the hourly compensation and maximum number of hours for both of them. For Mr. Bartels, those terms remain the same, an hourly rate of $100 with a maximum of 500 hours each year. The hourly compensation for Mr. Van Slyke is proposed to increase from $110 per hour to $120 per hour. The last rate increase for Mr. Van Slyke was in 2015. The maximum number of hours is going to decrease from 900 to 825, so the amount of, the amount budgeted for that contract will remain the same. And in the case of the 825 hours, which will be the new maximum, the number of hours worked has fallen below that consistently. So just to wrap up, a couple more points. Staff relies on the support provided by these two consultants. Staff is satisfied with the work product, and I think it's also worth pointing out that with the retirement earlier this year of Assistant City Manager Mike Kopp, the experience and the institutional knowledge of these two consultants, I think, are especially valuable now. We have a great Assistant City Manager, Ken Johnson, who is settling into this role, and I think benefits greatly from the support provided by these consultants, as does Heather Barakis, who is not new to the city, but also, I think, benefits greatly from their services. I ask for the council's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke to this topic, so I'll try to be brief during budget cycles. So approximately this time last year, I feel that due to our current staffing, FTE, or full-time staffing that we have, we have Business Development Manager, we have or full-time staffing that we have, we have business development manager, we have economic or business development manager, communication manager, which I know that Mr. Bartels or KBC no longer is one of his criteria or one of his roles, but that was in the past. Due to the full-time employees that we do have, I see a lot of overlap or redundancy with the consultants and our full-time employees. We did hire, as Chairman Deuter mentioned, each of these individuals or each of their companies long ago, at least in my perspective, long ago, being for KBC, being in 2009, so 15 years ago, and Vance Like Enterprises even further back, back in 88. Not, to my knowledge, we have never looked elsewhere for these type of services to know what we are getting is appropriate pay-wise as well as number of hours. Again, as Alderman, or Alderman Deuter mentioned, in regards to the percentage of hours worked versus what is budgeted or their maximum in their current contract, has been below, which I ask, then why are we renewing a contract for the same dollar amount as previous years? Typical accounting practices is take the average dollar amount over the past three years, and that should be the current budget item, and therefore reflect here, the current contract dollar amount for both of these individuals, which would be relatively lower. But we look like, even though we're changing the number of hours of Vance Like Enterprises, we're raising the dollar amount and therefore having an annual total of the same amount as previous years of $99,000. I do understand that there's been, it's a very well-written report, so thank you to the committee as well as staff in regards to multiple examples, and Alderman Deuter made mention of some of those examples during her discussion on this topic. But I find it not a good use of resources to be sending a consultant who gets paid $100 an hour to go to the same meeting that one, if not two, if not three staff members are going. I took an analysis of 2023, and these are all development economic meetings, from subcommittees to the Economic Development Commission meetings, and every single time, one if not two, most of the time, two staff members were at the same meeting. What is the benefit of having a consultant that we're paying $100 an hour to go into the same meeting that we have two staff members going to? Therefore, as I said, last budget meeting, I, I think that we should be reducing the number of hours, especially for the role that KBC plays, because we have a ton of overlap, in my view, that should be eliminated and leave it to the staff that are currently going to these meetings to handle the business there. The only other comment I'll say is one of the other things that this consultant does is business retention. I don't think, once again, that it's great use of resources or any special skill to be following up with the businesses in town for a consultant who gets paid $100 an hour.
Other discussion? All right, Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Park? Aye. Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
No.
Deuter?
Aye.
Vremus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Cahill, absent, Toledo?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, two nays, one absent.
Eleven ayes, two nays, one absent. The resolution 6.21 passes. Reports and recommendations of elected officials, Mayor Levin. Trick-or-treat hours are 3:30 to 7:30 on October 31st, and it's been pointed out to me that Alderman Hill is starting early.[1680.28][1680.28][laughter] The Committee of the Whole will begin right after our city council, and we will be having Committee of the Whole to talk about our 2025 budget for the next several weeks. We have three recycling events, the electronic and textile recycling event, and the prescription drug take-back day, which is not exactly recycling, are both on October 26th. Check the website, but the prescription drug take-back, it is the police department and our Public Works facility is hosting the electronic and textile recycling event. And finally, the pumpkin recycling starts November 1st, right, at the Public Works facility. Those are my announcements. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. One item tonight. The first of two fall leaf pickups will be November 6th, 7th, and 8th, with your regular refuse pickup. That's leaves that need to be placed in marked cans, paper bags, or cardboard boxes. We will be scheduling a second pickup in December with more information to follow.
Thank you, City Manager. Are there any other reports of elected officials? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Hill. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We adjourn, and thank you all.[1774.11][1774.11][applause] We will...